Is it gonna fade?
It's gonna fade.
I know, there might be a new process going on.
It's gonna fade.
Or it already fades.
It's been that long.
We're live.
You're live, thank you.
I'd like to call the North Bramford Board of Education Special Meeting to order. Location Stanley T. Williams, November 15th. It is 7:04. Can I have a roll call, Mary?
Sure.
Chairman Papa Bolster?
Here.
Vice Chair Nocrio?
Here.
Secretary De Siena?
Here.
Janet Bossono?
Here.
Zachary Canada?
Here.
Kim Dawson?
Here.
Victoria Lanza?
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Visitors? Usual suspects out there. Okay, now, student representatives, oh, we're down one today.
Yeah, so they had some little...
You can handle it.
You got this.
So, uh, some events I'd like to highlight that happened in North Bramford High School. The NBHS Veterans Day activities were held on November 11th during the advisory. Each grade being an inspirational vehicle focusing on veterans, their service, and the importance of the holiday. Veterans also returned to the building to visit the students. The NBHS Music Department sponsored their annual cabaret on November 11th. Mr. Phillips organized the event and students performed at the NBHS cafeteria. This year's theme was "Popping with Due Time," featuring pop music from the cassette era. And there were several annual field trips that returned this fall on those new additions. The annual trip to Chateau Paulo, as students AP Biology and AP Environmental Science, participating in onsite experiments during the trip, including water sampling collections. They collect microvertebrates, that's on that. And ten NBHS members participated in the Shoreline Music Festival of Cottage Child High School on October 6th and 13th. The most gifted and dedicated students from the entire Shoreline Conference performed. Select students attended a visitation trip to the Little Sex and Beauty House on October 11th, and others visited Gateway November 1st. The college fair trip to UNH occurred on October 13th. And members of Bioscope and students taking creative writing for their workshop at ECSU, posting on poetry creative writing on October 14th. It was a nice, yeah, when all these students came and they shared their poetry over the end of the thing that was there. And it was the return of the New York field trip. And students from the higher level languages went to New York City and they attended a museum from Italian-American immigrants and call it the Italian-American family, both outside and inside the building. And then went to Ellis Island and we stopped in Little Italy to eat.
I heard it was fantastic.
It was, it was a lot of fun.
It was a long day, too.
Your daughter sent me a picture of her family name on like one of the registers. It was really cool.
I got a free gift text saying, what's, what are all the...
Yeah, 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 were all of you doing that to your parents, like, what are we looking for?
All the seniors, we paid $10, we could all share the computer together, so they don't have to pay everything. So they'll all, they'll throw a corner of the, uh...
They're smart, too.
Throw a little corner looking it up, it's like, uh, how do you, that's a different way to say Shadman than like, uh... How do you say, like, uh, for me, it was like De Felice and Fision, so I've got mine on the back of the Alasana thing. I have a lot of pictures of that.
Nice.
That's really cool.
That's awesome.
It was a really fun trip, and I'm glad to do it this year.
Good.
Totally.
I'm glad you got to do it this year, too.
In fact, you know what we'll say.
Any questions for our round? You are free to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
You're strong. All right.
And that voice, I have to say.
Right?
I know, I love his, he's got a great speaking voice.
You're doing T-Birds.
Yeah, I'm a recurring angerer.
He's got a great speaking voice.
That's what they should be doing.
Yeah.
Good choice.
I said that when he did the National Honor Society, when we were doing that, I was like, wow, he's got a great speaking voice.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, then, you want me to move on? I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda of the November 15th, 2022 North Bramford Board of Education Special Meeting. I submit.
Second. Any discussion? No changes to the minutes, everything's good? Okay. Is everybody here? Is all, is all everyone here?
Do you want a roll call?
Everyone was here, right? Do a roll call just...
No.
Not yet, not yet, I'm not finished yet.
Roll call.
Chairman Papa Bolster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nocrio?
Yes.
Secretary De Siena?
Yes.
Janet Bossono?
Yes.
Zachary Canada?
Same.
Kim Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria Lanza?
Yes.
All right, Scott.
Okay, moving forward with my report, the recognition for the board to recognize the East Avon Co-op marching band for winning the New England State Championship on October 29th, 2022. And I just have a very brief email from one of our parents. I want to share some exciting news. The East Avon High School Co-op marching band won the New England State Championships on October 29th and the national championships on November 5th. This band features three members of North Bramford High School key roles, Nathan Higgins, Ayla Rissuti, and Mr. Shadman, who, the name is mentioned, has been with the program this entire time at high school. It's a, it's a great accomplishment to the school community and our district, where we work the East Avon marching band, so we co-op them and our students travel with them. So, again, congratulations, and you certainly are proud of their accomplishments.
Yeah.
So, the board griefs are attached. I'm sure you had a chance to go through them. It's been a busy time, the Veterans Day, prayer ceremony was a huge success. And we're thankful for the board members that were able to attend, that could get out there. I know, I saw you with Ron at the middle school presenting, and the kids really thoroughly were really captivated by the experience of our veterans. I think they did a wonderful job in all buildings. I just expect great feedback, so, and I'm sure you'll speak about it when you get a chance at the end. Okay? Any questions on the board griefs?
Nope.
No, okay. Curriculum instruction. Carter, I'll turn that over to you.
All right, I had two quick things in this. First, I'll do the November professional development update. So as you know, we had two days recently in all the buildings, what I would call successful days. There was a combination of lots of different things across the buildings. I believe I said the board update, which is the highlight for you here. Jerome looked at supporting anxiety in the classroom. It was teacher-led, the training was appreciated. At both elementary buildings, they did their illustrative math curriculum training and outside consulting. Purposeful play was a training that Jerome Harrison held for the pre-k staff, integrating academic and social goals within the context of play-based learning. Especially, I also did a training called Educational Benefit Training across the district. And Making Thinking Visible was also a session at Jerome. There was a session of Making Thinking Visible at TDS and at NDIS as well.
Making what visible?
Thinking.
Thinking, oh, yeah, got it.
TDS specifically had a session on recognizing and responding to ADHD in the classroom, much support students. That's the guy who played time with the P L A coach around small group playing, uh, planning. They did a data analysis session, and as I said, they also had a Making Thinking Visible session. At NDIS, they had a session as well as the high school on verbal de-escalation, how to work with students and to kind of limit any escalation or agitation. Additionally, they had action planning sessions throughout the fourth day and a data workshop. And like I mentioned, they also had a physical thing, my strategy session as well. They did a suicide prevention training for all their staff. At the high school, they also had math curriculum training. They continued their work with the ASK division of graduate. Verbal de-escalation, they had some tech training, used the community board, a lot of curriculum writing and updates in their curriculum map and unit plans. And they also did some preliminary work for the movements upcoming for them as part of their days and ends. As part of it, we sent out a survey to staff, kind of get their input on how the session went, what captures strong sessions, and if there's something that's lacking, what we can do. Someone to collect and analyze that for the next round. And then, if there are no questions on that, the second piece that I was charged with was kind of taking a look at what we're doing in the district for drug education, that was a board inquiry. So just kind of giving you a highlight of some of the things across the district. So, drug abuse use education is formally taught in the seventh, eighth, 10th, and 12th grade. As you know, there's no formal K through five health curriculum. That's not to say that skills aren't taught in age-appropriate ways, about decision-making, analyzing influences, responsible decision-making, things of that nature are taught at the upper level through the teachers and classroom teachers. In addition to that, all the buildings have their advisory programs for...
Trial. Every time.
Trial program for community days in the elementary schools, where they deal with whole-school events on, again, promoting healthy behaviors, good social-emotional learning skills to resist any kind of pressure or drug use. In addition to that, we have an extensive, as you know, social work and mental health teams in all the buildings that are supporting families with any substance abuse issues in their own families or age-appropriate ways with kids in schools.
Does it also cover vaping?
Uh, it does, yes, because that's formally taught in the same grades in high school. And we've done, as you know, parent forms at various times throughout the years on these types of drug use, smoking, vaping, alcoholism, opioid addiction, health and wellness, suicides, and things like that. We try to pilot those across the district for all families. PD teachers incorporate some of that at the elementary level into their lessons, that concept of wellness. As you know, we have wellness fairs in all the schools where there's student led and student presentations, which may or may not include drug use topics. And then, the last kind of inquiry around that is kind of what's, what are we doing with kind of our policemen? We used to have a DARE program, the DARE program is no longer in, it disbanded, and some have tried to bring it back, but it's not used widely in North Bramford. PD is not, they're not trained in that to not operate. However, they have good relationships with all of our schools. They have police officers who have specific areas of expertise that are willing to come in and talk to buildings and classrooms in age-appropriate ways. And one of the things that Sergeant Lovelace is doing for me is he's going to give us a list of all the officers and their areas of expertise, and I can show them the buildings so that we can get them in to speak on their topics of expertise. We don't have school resource officers, as you know, from the police department, but they are very involved, and we have our security officers. So that was kind of what I looked into based on the inquiry. But if you have more questions related to health and drug education than, you know, we're doing in the district, we have that wellness committee that meets on a routine basis. And they proposed, and I think they're going to continue to propose, adding health educators at the K-5 levels as a desire in the district.
I like the idea of officers coming in and presenting to students.
We're also working with Park and Recreation on a grant that they have received for substance abuse education, so they're wanting to can, for school system, and fund at whatever level we decide on through the wellness committee to, you know, participate with. We'll make a topic, we'll fund it with speakers, and work with us. It's nice to have a community come out and help us in that.
Yeah, no, it really is, it's a community issue.
Team member.
Yeah, it's a community issue, right?
How often is the wellness committee, once a month?
It's not once a month, there are, how many, eight times you're up there?
Okay.
It's Tuesday after noon or something.
Any questions?
No.
Okay. Martha, can you take it?
So you have a packet in front of you. Just a quick update on the new financial system. We continue to work on some outstanding glitches we're having on the financial side. But tomorrow, we are having end-user training for budget development for the 22, 20, no, I'm sorry, 23, 24 fiscal year. And that will be done via Zoom by one of the Tyler Technology trainers with anyone on the administrative or secretarial level that is interested in participating in that. We'll go through step-by-step on how to use the budget development module and how to input the data. At the last board meeting, there was a question that came up about what we're doing as far as advancing our processes with technology. So what I did was I put together a little spreadsheet that's in your, in your packet. It's pretty colorful. On the left-hand side, it says process, in the middle, it says was, and the green column is revised. So I listed all of the things that I could think of off the top of my head that we have changed and moved forward with. I just want to add that with the implementation of the new payroll HR module in MUNIS, there will be a lot more to come. We just don't have clarity on that yet because the official design and implementation of that module really hasn't started yet. We are meeting with Tyler on Thursday, and that's where we'll begin to go through what are we currently doing and versus what the system can do or what it's capable of doing, the new, the new system. So those are some new things on the horizon. I just can't really tell you what they are yet because I'm not familiar with them.
I will say, I sign all the warrants monthly, and my pile used to be, cannot believe, about this big for a month, and it's down to about this big, because so much of it is...
What'd you say, what do you sign?
I sign off on all the...
It's called a warrant, but it is actually...
She did say warrant. I did, I did, I did, but...
No one, no one gets one.
Right, right.
It lists out all of the checks that we process, and before, there used to be all of the backup attached to that, so purchase order invoices and everything. But now that we electronically attach all that inside of MUNIS, the only thing that MRC sees is pretty much the check register and a very small report on the back.
Yeah, I've been telling you, I knew it used to be like this, and now it's like this. So save you a few trees.
Also in your packet is the Excel spreadsheet that you've seen for the past few months. And there also is another report behind that that I've labeled sample. Now, that is what the MUNIS report will look like. But I made sure I wrote sample all over it because I don't want you to think that those, that the ending balance is accurate. The reason why it's not accurate is because the payroll encumbrances aren't reflected in there because we're still running off two separate systems. So I wanted to show you what it will look like, but please use this spreadsheet to see what the, what the current numbers are. Getting down into the financial report, there really is no change from the things that I highlighted last month. The health insurance, which is now down even more. We're expecting an additional $660,000 to come in for employee contributions from now until the end of the fiscal year. And severance has not changed, natural gas has not changed, and equipment, this is new. There is a negative balance there. We had a four-foot chain link fence installed to tuck it, and we had to replace a exit door on the, on this building over on the FRC side. So those two things added up equal the $7,000 negative that you see there. In addition, there was another thing that came up during the week that I just wanted to give you the information on, the very last thing in your packet you're going to see. It may look familiar to you, I handed this out probably in July of last year, 2021. It basically categorizes all of the open purchase orders that we had as a district on June 30th, 2021. As you recall, all of the funds were accounted for at the close of the fiscal year. But then, as the fall went on and items didn't come in, or we were forced to close them because they, the items were not coming in because of shipping delays, et cetera. From COVID, we did end up returning to the town 524,000. But that, but this lists all of those POs and kind of categorizes them for you. So just in case there was a question on that, I just wanted to give it to you again.
This came on deals of, of an email.
Martha, are you going to address the 2% fund?
I think that's what...
Oh.
This, this will pretty definitely... So you did receive, I believe everyone got the email, to include this in the topic, that's why the 5% was included. There was also a question about 2%. When we closed the budget out last year, as you recall, I worked with a council member over the fall, and we came up with an agreement for the budget. It was kind of, you know, crazy times of the end of COVID and how it played out. It was on a phone conversation. So lost in the interpretation of what was left out was the 2% funders we've received over the past several years. So when I reported to the board on the facets of, or what made up our budget moving forward, the 2% was capped at $275,000. I included it in the budget as the full 2%. So what that did was give us a shortfall of $340,000 that was returned back to the town as the town still has. So we had an opportunity to go through all of the communications today with Michael Downs and with Anthony Esposito. I and I today. And we kind of backtracked and went through my emails to the board, my email to all administrators, what we were working on, and then all of the budgetary items from the first day of the fiscal year to now that said, was working off of the $637,000 all the way through and how we were planning it down. About two weeks ago, Anthony looked at it and said, oh, wait a minute, that's, it's capital 275, that's what...
What, did he notice the motion? Is that how it came up? Or how did he catch it?
No, he was going through it, and when he saw it, because I asked him that, how, how did you see that?
Yeah, so... Every, every month, we balance to the town our records. And ever since April, we've been going, you know, that's included in our...
Right.
And everything was fine, there was no issue. And then, we closed out all of our purchase orders for '21, '22, and we had a remaining balance of 640,000. And someone at the town hall reached out to us and said, well, wait a minute, that's wrong. And I responded back, and I said, no, I'm sorry, this is, you know, Scott's email to the board, administrators, and this is what was discussed, and, you know, I went through the whole thing. And then, I received another email with the town council meeting minutes.
The motion.
The motion.
And in the minutes, it does say, in conversation.
In conversation.
So Mike Downs was very understanding of how, in translation, it...
So how does that impact us at this point, like...
So I can, no, Martha can speak to that.
Yeah, we are free, so we have $340,000 less in...
Yeah, I got that.
In Fund 25 than what we were anticipating, so...
How is that going to impact our spending? What was that planned for? Right, like...
So what is in the 25 account right now? No, we have, I think we have three different accounts, from the 1% to 2%, and then this other 2% that's down. It's, it's very healthy still, it's, I don't know what to say.
Yeah, um, there's probably close to a million dollars in that, in that account.
I think that's an issue with town council because the 2% fund or the 1% fund, we carry it over, but we're not supposed to keep carrying it over. We're supposed to use it, and, and then, that's it. It's not supposed to be a constant cushion, and I know that's an issue with them because I get a call probably every six months about it. And it's, it's something that we have to change our practice, too. What I would suggest is that that fund should be for one-time use and not for reoccurring things. And so if, if we have those ideas of what we need, more like a, more like a capital fund, but not quite a capital fund, we should use it that way. If we still have 2% from our existing budget, say, for example, our 2022, 2023, and we still have 20, you know, 2%, carry that over. But carrying the 2% and 1%, oh, we got this in '08, oh, we got this in '09, oh, we got this in 2011, that really irks them. And I kind of see why, because we're saying, and then we go to budget, right? And we go to present our budget and say, we don't want a flat line, we want status quo, or look at, we negotiated these union contracts, we want to give more to our teachers, and they're like, use your 2% fund. Well, at some point, that's going to bite us in the tail, right? And I'm not sure if the board's aware of it, but we're personally responsible for going over budget. So I get, we don't want to be like 0-0, like in RT, like, I get that. But the 2% fund needs to be spent from year to year, and we should be using our budget. And if we have 2% or 1% or 10,000, whatever it is...
In the conversation with those employees, you'll see in the minutes about capital project and its turfing of field and manufacturing.
So is that what the money was supposed to be paid for?
It's clear within the minutes. So, go back and read the minutes. In our conversation on the phone between the two of us, those were the two big capital projects that I've been talking about for, for years. So that would be something that, that money would be shifted for.
The 2% fund.
The 2% fund.
Right, but then she should hold it in capital. We shouldn't be holding it in our care.
Again, it's, it's like the, the town council has a rainy day fund. We, we don't have that at all.
We, no, because they're the bank, we're not the bank.
If we, if we do away with the 2%, then we're going to do what we do, and then we're going to spend down prior to closing out the school year because we're not going to want to give back $500,000. You, we're a $32 million budget, 2% is $600,000 at the end. So if we have a winter where it's 60 degrees and, and we don't spend a great deal on fuel or our special ed costs...
Right, but I think that should be explained. I, I think when we're giving a budget, it should be in good faith that we're, we're spending it.
And if we're...
And when we're inflating some areas, right, you can't predict Mother Nature. You can't predict special ed all of the time, like, there's definitely unpredictable items. But we need to be close, right? And if we have to give back...
The P L O thing is something we can control.
Right, but if we have to give back money, there should be an explanation to why, in each category, of why we're over. I'm just saying, a 2% fund going from, for three years, it's just, it's bad, it's not right. So at the end of the year, we are allowed, if the town council grants it, to carry over 2% of our budget. What, up to, up to 2%? Up to 2%? And that's kind of where we got the snag in this year, because we didn't get the full 2%. However, with that, it's in good faith, again, that we, the board, will be spending that money on one-time, like, one-shot deals, kind of, that year. So that we may ask for the 2% fund again, but the money in the original 2%, say, 2000, I keep saying 11, like, like 2011, like it's yesterday, but 2017, like, we still have that money. We should not have that money, that should be spent down in drain.
But it was in the operations budget for this year.
So...
It's in for operations.
But it shouldn't be.
But it's, it's now, it's sitting back at town hall.
Right, we shouldn't be using...
So you're saying it rolled over into...
It rolled over, and we shouldn't be rolling the 2% fund over, and we shouldn't be using it for operation.
Technically, we're not allowed to have any money left at the end of our fiscal year.
Well, the 2% allows us to...
But technically, we weren't allowed. It has to be returned to the town. A few years back, a state statute came out where boards of ed, with permission of the town council, can hold up to 2%.
Like a contingency?
Like a, yeah, okay, a contingency.
But it needs to be used in one fold.
No, it doesn't have need...
But that's the preferences our town council...
But it's, it's not advisable to use it on salaries, on salaries, because, you know, you can't go out and hire somebody on that, you know, hire 10 employees on that money. Because if you don't get it the next year, how are you paying for those 10 employees that you just spent that money on? So you're, it's, it's just a better practice to use it on something that isn't a reoccurring expense.
So it might be computers, it might be books, it might be whatever.
Was there conversation, was there conversation about the field?
Our capital is earmarked, and even this 2% has been a conversation of turf field at the high school and manufacturing. Those are the two things that we have beaten to death talking about for several years. And in the minutes, you will see those two things mentioned there specifically, manufacturing.
So that's why we're not spending down that money.
But Martha, I would say, if we want to be prudent and build a relationship with town council, that we should ask them what they want to do with the 2% fund, knowing that these are what it's earmarked for. If they don't want it in our care and they prefer to hold it and put it in a capital fund for us, fine, that's fine. They know what, what it's earmarked for, but it's going to keep ticking them off every time they see it, and we're going to have the same conversation, and honestly, it's getting old.
Last year, when I say... Last year, when I say last year, I mean 2021, was the first year that they said, we're not giving you status quo, but take what you're able to save in the earlier budget and we'll let you carry that over so you can use those monies, the Fund 25, and what we've given you to meet your status quo. So that's why this year I was going with the same thing. Okay, they only gave us 1%.
Yeah.
And so they're going to let us take the 2%. And so when we, when I figured out what to move over to Fund 25, I think we shared the same philosophy in that I took big things out so that when they did say to me, what did you use the, the 2% for, or what did you have to do without if you didn't have the 2%? Well, this year, it's the whole technology lease, $180,000. It's a lot of the athletic things at the high school, all the officials, the equipment, things like that. So that when it comes time in the spring for them to say, what would you have to do without if you didn't have that? I can very easily say now, these are the items that, that we, are, need put back into our budget because there's not going to be the money in the 2%.
And I think, I've been saying this now for a few years, I think we need to tell a better story when we present our budget. Like, we need to show them how it impacts the students, how it impacts the families, how it impacts the teachers. We need to make it more personal. We talk very, kind of flippant, frankly. And that's not, I mean, granted, I also know that it's not an easy sell, so don't get me wrong, but we need to make it more personal. It's a lot harder to say no to a story and real people than it is to dollars and cents, right?
Correct, I agree.
And taxpayers, right? And we have taxpayers and everyone's accountable, but when you're like, hey, little Johnny's not going to be able to play, you know, football because we don't have enough of money, or we're not going to be able to do that AP science class, or you know what, special ed's going to be impacted this way, like, tell them real things that are really going to happen and we can talk to our teachers about it.
Remember that.
We did pay to play, but that's, I mean, it's not even just pay to play. It's, it's, it's education as a whole. I mean, and you know what? Not everyone can pay to play, honestly. Like, sports in school, in high school, in middle school, in whatever school you're in, public school, should be free. They, they just should be free. That's our failure as a board if our students have to pay to play. That's our failure, not anyone else's. And we need to build a better relationship with town council. You know what? You get more with sugar than you do with vinegar. And I am a sassy little thing, so I know I have a bite. But you know what? When people have the power, you got to learn how to work with them because you know what? They're going to tell you no. And it's not going to be good. And you know what? It's not telling me no, Shawna Holzer, it's telling the first grader no, it's telling the senior no, it's telling that eighth grader no. So we have to keep in mind that it's not our egos. They could not like us, I don't care. They could love us, still don't care. What I need is for them to support our children. So we just, let's think about that. And when it's time to work for a budget, I think we all work together on that presentation. So we go in as a very united front telling that story. And maybe we bring some of our teachers in telling real stories. Like, I really want to do it a different way. It should be more like a storyboard than just a budget.
Would you remember if the budget was shown, they had, the people come talk about the ambulance?
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, there's a lot more capital than spreadsheets.
Oh, yeah, that was. Yeah, you need the spreadsheet, but it's, it's a visual, but it's not the same as, yeah, they got that ambulance. Okay, so that's that.
Just a comment with this, with this one, this is kind of headed down a good note, right? So the, what happened to your building, right? Your building didn't go online. So if something is considered, it's using these funds for outside of the unplanned event kind of expenses for this new building that we don't, not talking, there's still the rules, something like that, or the maintenance, or something that maybe come up where, whether you have a fix or material or, you know, something we didn't anticipate in our budget with the lights or something, just to keep that in mind as a possible budget.
Then I think the two things we've talked about, the turf field and the manufacturing, are something that I know the board supported before.
Still do.
Unless that changes, that's something that we continue to work towards and that's something that we want to accomplish because that would be another building on the grounds. And that would be a large turf area which would impact every student.
So is that something where there should be a sit-down and say, there's this much in the 1%, there's this much in the 2%? We want to keep it earmarked for this, but get them to agree, but see if they agree to it. And if they do, then it goes in writing. So it's a done deal.
That's exactly, I think we talk about that.
They are aware.
They have to do that at a budget.
Council members today and we did talk.
But we, but we need it in writing, you know, like.
Well, we're not going to do a phone conversation this year for the budget, I would think, because let's look where that goes. So I think we're going to go back to, and then when we do go to the final budget meeting, we all should be there. I think that's important. And then when we do present, everyone's there just to have that.
Yeah, just trying to not make it on a sports night.
Well, listen.
Scott, just like you like to be there for your kids, so do I.
Sunday nights are open, so.
Let's do, is your Sunday night open now?
Oh, the fans, it's about seven o'clock in the morning. That's the sports match in the afternoon. So anyway, I'm glad we had this conversation. And I think it was a healthy conversation with the council members. There was no intent.
It was a mistake.
It was, it is what it is.
It's a mistake, as long as they can figure it out.
For that money that went back to the town, and I'm sure that council member will bring it back to the council to have discussions about what we would like to do.
I would just love to see that in an email form, once, once they have their discussion about it and they've decided, just, I'd love to see it in an email form.
Well, we're together as part of our communications committee.
Okay.
That we can sit down.
We can do that, fine.
We have a committee.
Yeah, we do.
We do.
Well, let's use it.
Yep, yep.
Works for me.
Martha, are you in any jeopardy, are we in any jeopardy, like with not having, I mean, it's $370,000.
No, trust me.
You're okay. That's all I just, that's all I really want to know.
A new driveway in or a new air conditioner, whatever, or a roof on it, we're fine. You're not going to have to take it.
Just wanted to make sure if I was going to be having a fundraiser.
I do have one last question for Martha. Actually, on this one, which is, I see units being popped up, you know, pretty much corrupted by, is this all, is that all within like the scope of what, you have to pay for extra features to do that, or is this all?
No, that's, it's all part of the new system.
Yep.
There is one more thing I just wanted to mention also in the packet is the '23, '24 budget process calendar. And just want to point out, there are two dates, actually three dates. February 7th is a scheduled budget workshop, but we've listed the 9th as a snow date if we need it.
Yep.
And we also listed February 14th and 15th.
That's fine.
If needed. And then we actually are going to reschedule the board meeting to February 23rd.
That's right.
Just so that there's time in case there's changes that need to be made before.
I think that's smart.
I think that's a great idea, that's fine.
I'd rather have the dates picked up now than at the last minute, trying to figure it out.
Yep, Mar's doing it.
If anyone's agreement, we'll hear it, Mar.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve the 2023, 2024 budget process calendar to include all budget workshop dates and times as proposed.
I'll second. Do we need any discussion? Does anyone need to check their calendar? Does anyone need to do anything? Are we okay? Yeah.
D.
Yes, D.
D.
There. Good, everyone? Good? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was easy, okay.
I'll do the food service, just so, so.
Food service?
Exhibit, lunch price increase, there's two paragraphs there, I'm not going to read them to you, for the rationale for us increasing our lunch prices by a quarter. We are coming out with a free lunch at the end of this month after a year and a half. So due to numerous reasons with food costs going up, the shortages with supplies, we've looked around and we are more than competitive with our pricing for surrounding towns, but in order for us to maintain, we need to, we haven't had an increase in several years.
In a while, yeah.
Well, it was free for the last two years.
But then, so we're looking for a quarter, we'll just need to vote to approve the new meal prices. You can see they go up. Anybody else go up 50, 50? The youngsters go from 275 to 3.
And we're still on track with the other direction as well, right? Exploring that, okay.
Yep.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the proposed new meal prices as stated above effective December 1, 2022. Second?
Any discussion? I'm usually the big food one on this one, but. Mary, let's just have a roll call though, just a case.
Chairman Kappa Volter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Akria?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Jan Bozama?
Yes.
Zachary Canada?
Yes.
Kim Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria Lannan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Exhibit being the school calendar, I have a motion here to approve the school calendar. It was in your, the last time we approved it. So I have a motion if somebody would like to pass it.
Okay, I did want to ask a question first before approval. So September 28th through March 20th is four weeks in a row of early recesses.
Okay.
And just from a working parent standpoint, that's hard. Do we have to have four in a row? Is there any rule of thumb at all?
Well, for a lot of our PD scheduling and how we built our calendar around the PD, that's primarily why we do it. In some months, there's, there's obviously fewer days and where it falls. But we've reduced some of those half-days. We've had those conversations, but they seem to be worthwhile so that we're not adding additional days to the beginning or end of the school year for the rest.
Why is the one Jerome Harrison, it looks like a Valley one, is that conference days or something?
It's sort of.
Parent teacher conference.
Okay, yep. Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve the 2023, 2024 school calendar as presented.
I'll second. Oh, nope, discussion, go ahead, discussion, go ahead. Did somebody second?
Yeah, I think you seconded.
I seconded, right?
Sorry. The dates are known for moving.
Yeah, so it's, how is that? It's, as long as we get to 181 or 182, we're going to be fine. So we'll adjust accordingly. Right now, when I do my update on the building committee, they put a date out in late January. Do I think that's realistically?
No.
Realistic? Probably not. So if it goes over a February break, we would be flexible.
So if it goes to February or April, we're fine? Like, we have days either way?
And it's moving forward, it's running year or two out of the year.
Yeah, that's okay. And it shouldn't impact our start of school.
No, it doesn't affect us.
Right, yeah.
None of that will start.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
No problem.
Okay, good. Can I do an all in favor? Is everyone all in favor of this? Do it, yes. Let's do an all in favor.
Aye. If you're not, you could say, say aye.
Oh, wait, roll call, sorry, I take it back, roll call.
Chairman Kappa Volter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Akria?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Jan Bozama?
Yes.
Zachary Canada?
Yes.
Kim Dawson?
Yes.
Yes.
Victoria Lannan?
Hey, Scott, will you put this up on the website? I've already been getting calls from parents asking if our calendar was approved yet.
It is done.
Right, but can we put it up on the website so that they can see it easily? So I'm not taking a picture of it and sending it out to everybody?
Well, I'm going to, Bruce is going to be handing out some paperwork and it's a great segue into Mr. Williams. Please come forward.
I'm going to like.
Manufacturing, no, this is our.
Can I just ask one question about half-days? Are we getting out earlier tomorrow than normal?
Yes, yes, yes.
Because those are, it's for conferences.
Marcy, yes.
And those of you who are a day gig.
Ellen May.
Ellen May.
Put your boots on because we're with them. Full day, so. Have a good day, Mar.
Okay, 12:15 in one, they're good now, okay.
So is your revolver last meeting? Hope it was on target.
Thank, I really appreciate her.
It was requested just to.
Like, taking the feedback.
Look at how we are using technology and streamlining our effectiveness. So I asked Mr. Williams to do some homework.
Yeah.
And he put together two pages of bulleted information.
I like that.
For your discussion for processes and how we're following these. Just so you had an idea of where we were and where we, how far we've come. There's cost implications, obviously, but, you know, anytime you go into the platform or apps to do these things, but, if, let's, or Bruce, just talk to you and then answer the question.
Let's go back a little ways, just so you can see the kind of changes that is going on in the future. Think of it as a look at, see if you have any questions.
School security's got a big thing, I'm just going to. Security, throw things out. We're on system-like platform. We work with Deputy Loveless, Deputy Chief Loveless, to make sure that we're compatible with them. They're going to a new police station, we have a new high school, we've added additional 60 cameras, I think, to that building. So making sure that every officer, every time they get into a vehicle, will be able to access visibility to our buildings and that we can talk back and forth, we know that the police department has the ability to see all of our cameras. So we've done a really nice job.
Our future work is 9/11 uniform program, which is in a lot of the offices. You access it from the cars, they'll be able to access the doors, control the doors, they can open and lock doors, they'll be able to see cameras from the car in the hallways, they'll be able to decide which exits they're going to be opening, which ones are going to lock. Same thing with first responders, they'll be able to see the closed doors in case of fire emergency. So gives us a lot of capability, those are basically paid for by a grant.
So all of our report cards, all of our student reports, obviously are now digitalized. Food service, ordering of food, paying for food.
We have a lot of.
We meant a SNAP for our nursing system, which was a big rule, we had to do a ton of data, but to do that.
What's SNAP?
SNAP is.
Nurses, software, contractor.
School, nurse, I knew it because I saw it. Anybody remember what staffs and SNAPs mean?
Something was brought to my attention, probably because I had to do it. So when you go in for, what is that thing called where the athletes go register?
For.
What is that thing they go in? You have to register, it's not power school, you have to go in, family ID.
For sports.
For sports, for family ID. For sports, for family ID. When you go in there, the students have to upload physicals every, I think. Thirteen, yeah, thirteen months, right? And it's manual for the parents, but that's fine, but I think the manual check, it's a manual check on the backend that it's done. And I was wondering if there was a way to streamline that because the athletic director has to do that manually? Or the nurse has to do it manually?
The nurses.
So what happened is that program started before we started automating anything? So the high school went into it and that's the way that it operates.
Is there any way to like?
They won't let us interface with it?
It's like not our program.
No, I know, but they won't do upgrades or workarounds? I mean, I've not met an application that, everything can be built if they choose to build it. It's cost and time, right?
Cost.
It's cost and time, so.
I haven't had a conversation with that, but I.
Do you mind? It's just if we could, I mean, that's just so manual and it's not difficult to do, but it's time consuming. And I'd rather have like a nurse and an athletic director spending their time with kids.
Yeah. I'll have that conversation.
Yeah, and if anyone thinks of a very manual process that is taking you away from kids, let us know, because I know Bruce is a problem solver.
Yeah, he loves to solve problems.
He loves, he, but he does. There's a lot of them, but, right? Like he's not gonna know if you don't tell him.
So everything from school lunch payments to, you know, our app is up now on cell phones, correct? We don't know how many, do you have them downloaded, the app on your phone? So we don't have a way of seeing how many viewers we have, right? I asked you that the other day, but it's getting hits, we know.
Which one?
For the, yeah, for the texting.
SMS text, you started offering that up to parents and push down, so we can, and Joe was testing it?
Joe, Mr. Modio just did a test.
I thought I just downloaded it. I thought I just accepted it, it's an actual app? I got your text today. Oh, because someone said it was an app, it's just a process, you just, yeah, you.
So when we give a school cancellation, we're gonna text you.
We know, we know.
Texting.
So versus.
Call.
Oh my God, that call's so loud in the morning. Oh, it just makes me jump for Adam and.
Lower the ring on everyone's phone.
Even when I know it's coming and I'm looking for it.
All right.
All right, so anything you have, a question on these two pages, you can email Bruce. And future plans on backside is probably, you know, digitalized additional paperwork, I can facilitate, I think that was the main reason for this conversation.
Yeah.
With the rentals of the auditorium and how we were doing that.
Yep.
Planning on building a centralized access control system, it's close to individual building door controls, nine eleven, the form which Bruce spoke to. So those are the kind of futuristic things that we're looking at.
It's crazy for John Ford to run between each building to work on door controls. Just like the video system, we should have one system that controls.
Right.
Right, right. That makes total sense.
Yeah, that does make sense.
This is very helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, email me on the phone.
We'll find you, Bruce, thank you.
All right. So moving on, manufacturing initiative, it's ongoing and I'll continue to upgrade. I mentioned that we're gonna get out two, I think it's our business for things that we go into the manufacturing building. We put six modules that would be equipment and across, we already costed out the building on site where we go, square foot is the price per square foot or steel structure, we have that number. So the next part will be the equipment piece and staffing it and then everybody's gonna come on board. The council's got to accept it and start really focusing on state, federal and local funding.
Are we giving them a plan of, you know, like the town council and the state? Do we have to kind of give any kind of sizing plan or return on investment and how we plan on major revenue?
How we measure it?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Both like quality, like success of the students and then getting a job after, but also.
It would be over time, but obviously I think the initial sign-up for it as we shift a lot of our tech classes into this, and we're looking at like twenty-five percent of the population, I think realistic.
Yeah, I was also thinking adult ed so that it can pay for itself. That's what I'm thinking about, having kind of a parallel path of, one is quality and what we're offering our students and the other is what we can offer our community so that we can kind of supplement our budget or complement or whatever they want to do with our budget, but that it can help, it could help sustain our education, right?
Shortline adult ed is really hot on us. We've met with them about this, they love this. The other piece would be if we wanted to take students from our communities and charge them a tuition for a half-day commitment. And that's a whole other conversation.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
There could be kids that would.
Right, but these are all ideas that we should have like kind of fleshed out before we get to that point so we can literally size it, how many people, how would it work? Yes, it is a business plan.
Right, and after our, right, after outside of our, students. Renovation project, I know there was a meeting, there were five bullets that I just wanted to share with my conversation and then I'll turn it over to Zach and Beth. After speaking with the Build Bank superintendent, due to supply chain issues, the balance of missing glass on the building is shipping on eleven thirty twenty-two will be installed shortly after, so at the end of this month.
How's the school gonna hold up?
As you go through and look at the building, you'll see small pocket areas where there's still plywood, I'm sorry.
How's that gonna hold up? It's gonna like snow and rain and.
Oh, no, they're covered with plywood.
Is it gonna be okay when I have more issues with the walls and paint? It's gonna be okay now? Cool, okay.
Yeah, the plywood covers the opening, there's no open areas right now.
Perfect, good.
They're all carved. Exterior doors, about twelve doors are shipping on January tenth of twenty-three. Supply chain and rooftop units, three of them have shipped, however, certain sections were delayed to December ninth. One unit is still shipping on December ninth.
Are those the units that take a while to get up and running, like need testing and?
We are developing an alternate plan to get these units installed, so yes.
Zach, I listen to what you guys tell me about it.
Right, so if they do come on time on these dates, but if they don't.
Right.
That's the biggest thing that will impact them.
That's what, that predicts the pandemic.
That does, okay.
So this is an important one. The flooring millwork and FRP product that was installed outside of the temp and humidity ranges has been resolved. We are providing a one-year extended warranty on the existing warranty. So it's the warranty plus a year. I spoke to Alros and he is good with everything that's been said here. The last one is they're targeting January twenty-third for the occupancy, provided the bomb materials arrive as indicated. So that's January twenty-third. Do I think that's realistic? I don't, so I'm just throwing it out so you understand that they're looking at that January twenty-third date. There's a lot of what-ifs with shipping, arrival, installation, all of that.
A lot of moving parts.
There's a lot of moving parts.
Okay, so like, do you think February is realistic or do you think April's realistic? You two?
I don't know, I wanna make a comment until.
Or maybe June? Once you get the product, you can tell us, okay, all right.
Once it's there, we can confirm and then a time can start, yeah.
We could start the clock. Okay, so we're just kind of in a holding pattern until it comes, that's fair.
The only thing has been clear, like, they want to hit that date, the twenty-third because of the demolition of the other building there. I think February would be realistic and with our timing of that long weekend, that would work, it won't be April.
Now, one of the other things that was brought up to me is that it takes about two weeks to transition buildings. How are we doing it in a long weekend? I don't know enough about transitioning buildings.
The teachers have been packing, everything is going into boxes now, they just, Mr. Stuffer, you spent, you must leave your, one of your PD days with everyone getting ready to go and then purging everything. So it'll be boxed and then teams will move.
But will they have a chance to see their classroom before, before like, hi students? I'm gonna teach you, but I don't even know where the books are.
Mr. Stuffer, I'm sure you answered that with Claire.
Yeah.
One of the things that we talked about last week with Build Bay and also the movie confidence we have, window during the exam week or potentially September CO, first week of January.
Okay.
We would like to get the staff in the building in the afternoon of the exam days. And then if there's a way we can get the students in to start the second semester of the February break. One of the things that the Meyer group would like to do is to move some things pre-move.
Okay.
We don't need to use Columbus Day, maybe the weekend of Columbus Day and then use those afternoons also for the exam week to start to move. Kind of do a stagger. So we talked about two scenarios, the earlier best case scenario and then the best case scenario in February as well. So we do think it's probably, John explained about this and Bruce was at the same meeting. We do think it's pretty enthusiastic to do it in a long weekend only without having another possible day in there.
Yeah.
There's more short days there that they can get in the building and start to move on a short Wednesday.
Yep.
Maybe work that looks at that Thursday or Friday as a no-scope for the high school to wrap around the weekend. Meyer thinks they're really gonna do a lot of pre-move and then get us in there that way. So if we can get the department chairs in October, Build Bay on the twenty-first, Dr. Wells is gonna be there. Who else will get the department chairs in with Build Bay on the twenty-first of November?
Okay.
And then the rest of staff possibly during the exam. So they have a whole schedule.
Okay, so if you feel like if it's too enthusiastic and you think there's gonna be like too much stress on the students and the teachers, let us know, I mean, we know it needs to be aggressive, right? But we don't want anyone to really like stress out so much that it's gonna impact their health or they're going to worry so much it's gonna impact the lessons, like, we want it to be a very happy time as opposed to like a stressful time and moving in the winter always stinks, let's just face it.
So our view is like multiple opportunities, so we can give a lot of, we can give them one extra day depending on which weekend it is.
Yeah.
That would really be helpful.
Okay.
And we'll know every two weeks where we scan.
Okay.
And if we're on a two-week, 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 and when the community needs, they'll take it.
But they've had meetings there.
As long as they let us know what they need, because I don't, like what I don't want to happen is, you know, it's going sideways and then everyone's like, you know, screaming, I'm like, we can't help them, we need to have forethought. Like I'm not really great with reaction, I'm better, much better.
December fifth.
Yeah.
Maybe invite Scott to be in there.
Perfect, perfect. All right, as long as you have a handle on it, I'm happy. Okay, good.
And we don't have a date, so this is all going to be a favor.
We don't have a date, but it's gonna happen, all right.
But we're preparing now and we're gonna get ready for it, but knowing that this is probably gonna. All right, so that's for my report on policy.
Okay, committee reports, right?
Committee reports first.
Yeah. Did the teachers ratify the contract?
They had to sit, will sit five days per their language agreement and then we voted on, they went back and sort of day with the teachers union and our attorney, so I'm guessing the next week?
After.
After next week, so right after next week.
So there will be no executive session today? Okay, all right.
Now policy.
Now policy. Do we, do we want, do all thirteen?
Well, we have, um, certainly some of the current first read, do we get to this one?
Yes, please.
Um, we have P one five one five, we'll change here, how to charge on that?
Yep.
P ten twenty, student attendance, twenty. Reason. R ten twenty, which is the regulations that are going to go with the policy. P twelve twenty-five, to improve completion rates for that day, that's the same. And P three three hundred, advanced course for, for which you're charging. R, oh, R is the regulations that have been built through. Some of these we've had as a first read last minute.
I thought so.
But decided to put it as a first read again because we have the regulation. We have P three three hundred and all thirty thirty.
Yeah.
So we need to get the regulations so we can kind of.
I agree with that, yeah, that's better, Beth, thank you.
So that's why we went to the first.
I was gonna say, I remember reading this.
Yeah.
But now we can bump it up against each other, it's good. Okay, perfect.
And then there are the second read policies again. The policies come from changes in the law, we're not even to. So we have P ten ten, retention net. We have P twelve sixteen, which is administrative minutes. P fourteen ninety, physical activity is new discipline. P twenty-four hundred, suspected abuse and neglect of children. P thirty-two twenty, online courses. P ninety-one, time, place and notice of meeting. These are by law changes. P ninety-one ten, meeting conduct. P ninety-one twenty, or receiving procedure. P ninety-one thirty, instruction and placement. P ninety-one sixty, or minutes.
Okay.
So we make a motion to approve all thirteen policies submitted and send it to L three X to the board event at a special meeting, the event of fifteen twenty-two, the second read, and Bruce will have detailed.
Awesome, okay, discussion?
Thank you, Beth, for putting all the time in on this, appreciate it.
Did everyone have a chance to read all thirteen?
The last four.
Okay.
But we didn't know that the last one, that we missed.
I had last name, so.
Yeah.
Stain for that?
That's your choice.
It's your choice to abstain if you like. Well, if we do, if we do all thirteen, he has to abstain because he didn't read four.
I mean, that's totally up to you.
Well, we really don't have a choice because it comes to me.
It's a statue.
He wants to read it, though, I know.
I see there's a bunch of references.
Yeah, yeah, all right, can we have a roll call though, Mary?
So you're doing them all together?
Yeah. Otherwise, we're gonna be here for more hours.
Chairman Kappa Volker?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Afria?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Jan Bolzama?
Yes.
Deputy Canada?
Yes.
Kim Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria Lannan?
Thank you, thank you, Beth.
I was asking.
Okay, Aces, we're done, building committee, we just talked about that. Because it's now permanent project, so that's fine, there was no communication. We don't have new business, we don't have to adjourn to executive session. I'm pretty sure there's no visitors and press, pretty sure. Go to the board.
I just have to say, I attended the community roundup, even though I was called out in the last meeting. I am drunk and my granddaughter's two one.
Nice.
So, and it was a great turnout, I think. Pre-COVID, a lot of teams and, well, we do need more time to pick up. It was, we talked about that, two hours is just not enough to get around the neighborhood. So that worked very well. I also was able to attend two different veterans' day, the TBES. A lot of kids participated, it was a very nice program, very slow received. And I went to NEIS, which is a little different format because the veterans actually get to talk to the kids. And just have to say, veterans do not like to talk about what happened in their service. They'll talk anecdotally about things that might be funny or things like that, but they do not talk about what happened in the war. They just don't. But the gentleman that worked, my husband, one of them talked about peer pressure when he joined the service. And I think that was well received, that these kids, even as older kids, that they were pressured into joining. And other references were made to using their education when they were in the box hall and how they had to use their math skills when incoming was coming.
Interesting.
I mean, it was.
Talk about a matter of life or death in math.
Well, because the trajectory they had.
Right, yeah, right?
So I mean, I think, and actually, one student actually walked up and thanked the veteran for bringing all this to his attention. And at first he was a little sleepy and didn't want to be here, but you never know as an instructor or teacher, you never know who you're gonna touch, who you're gonna affect, what word you say that's gonna connect with them.
You're right.
So, yeah, he's, both was my favorite veteran.
I attended the JADES, Veterans' Day and, I mean, I've been out of service fifteen years and there's a lot of different facility events along the way, whether it's in Fort Worth July or Memorial Day, also, we do a great job here in town, Memorial Day, just great, all that. Speaking, but I can tell you that I live quite a lot, sixty, maybe so, veterans, eighty, okay. But it was quite impressive to see the walk into it and with the drone flight crew coming on board and what they are. It was pretty emotional and I spoke to some of the folks, some of the guys that were there, maybe two that were old timer types and they didn't get the kind of celebration or response on their way back, which is kind of the common guess. But they saw this kind of thing happen and it made them touch their heart pretty heavily. And that kind of thing goes a long way for those guys and for me to see that, it was, it's kind of important. Thank you, me and everybody to see the kids understand how impactful it is on them. But I think they enjoyed it, I know they enjoyed it, it's all great. But I also liked the classroom discussion, that was fun, I got to hang out, make a couple of comments. Actually, I spent maybe, I feel like forty minutes, I don't know. And it was enjoyable all the way. I did, there were some cynicism to a couple of people that aren't knowledgeable of what happens in North Frankfurt for veterans, for veteran day events. And they were like, oh, kids gotta go to school, you know, kind of wrong with that. As a old timer, I'll show you the video and then change the mark. Who does everybody for?
Yeah, I know, I didn't get to go to high school, I heard about the one at the high school and they loved it. Kids got to sit and talk with them and I got some pictures from there, it was pretty cool. I was always, when I first got on the board, I was like, why are you going to school on Veterans' Day, you know? But then when you think about it, the kids are, parents are struggling to find places for the kids to go. They're sitting home in front of the TV, playing their video games, they're learning when they're in school on Veterans' Day. I mean, they're really learning the meaning of it, I think it's really important.
Yeah.
But to the answer to skepticism, Mr. O'Lord actually does his the day before because that was brought up where a lot of the vets want to.
Go to different. Go to different ones.
Go to meet vet friends and everything, so he has the day before.
That's nice, too. It's really nice, yeah, very considerate.
Um, I got to join Zach at the J J S one and I will comment that it was, it was a beautiful moving ceremony. It was great to see so many that are there. Our staff chorus was incredible. Like, I had no idea that we have so many fantastic singers and how they were amazing, it really was a beautiful ceremony. I also got to attend the fall fest at Totoket with Beth and we did Halloween at Jerome, which is our first two gigantic things that opened in like a real school setting. And Jerome, we had about eight hundred people in and out for the whole event.
It was insane.
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 But the kids had a blast, the parents had a headache. And, um, the fall fest, we had about like four hundred and fifty people come through. So it was nice to come back to these typical events and great to see so many parents coming together and working well together to put these events on for kids. So it's very nice to have a normal.
Okay, well, thank, thank you for your, your positive comments and I know that administrators take a great deal of pride with their staff putting these together, it's something that, you know, we changed, that years ago, you didn't, you know, you were walking to school here, you know, so this is something that, um, has proven to be a great success, I thank you. Is that it for visitors, I just wanna close there, I know Marion Valales here, our retired teacher. The Little Red Schoolhouse.
Oh, yeah.
You're not retired, you're still going. So Carter and I had a chance to meet Marion, we're working with the school system to help with the Little Red Schoolhouse. So we had a film crew go out the other day and video, like, take pictures of it. And we're gonna do a video montage and give presentation around it, get our kids really involved. I don't think we'd be fundraising at all buildings, but see if we can get actively involved when they start the restoration to get our carpentry class and advanced carpentry, um, involved with that.
That's gonna be great.
Anything we can do and then we want to get the field trips back and get the kids going. So we really had a great meeting, Marion, thank you for coming and taking the time. This is Zach and Donna Summer here, who's also here. The Donna Summer.
The Donna Summer.
They were wonderful, uh, insightful and they're really committed to, to making this happen. So we want to be a part of it if it's appropriate and I'll keep you, uh, abreast of everything. We'll do a presentation as we get a little more into it down the line, uh, because their goal is to raise a hundred thousand dollars, fifty of it, which is matching. So we're gonna be talking about this for a little while. And you'll see things coming through, uh, in your texts, new text messages about fundraisers for the project. All good, that's it.
Okay, um, the next regular Board of Education meeting is scheduled for Thursday. It has the seventeenth, but I think it's December fifteenth.
Yeah, seventeen is a.
That's right, so the next.
We're doing that because it's for.
That's right.
Actually, that will prove my point, I will not be at the next one.
Okay.
Because that's opening night of high school.
Okay. Okay, so you won't be here, all right.
I'll come to the playoffs.
On Thursday night? Can you go on Friday?
Uh, whatever, I don't get to.
Okay.
It's December fifteenth.
It's December fifteenth. Yeah, do we need to move that date? Are we gonna have forum, just making sure, I mean.
If you do, let me know and work it out and we can, we can do it up to.
I don't have the basketball schedule yet, but if there's three of us.
Okay, I'll get everything out to you, don't make any decisions tonight.
Yeah, that, that's what, we're shooting for the fifteenth.
December.
We're, yeah, we have, we're shooting for, um.
I'd like to stay away from the play and stay away from some other things that we can make easier. We're not, we're on December twenty-fourth.
Or we can, yeah.
It's going earlier than the fifteenth.
Yeah, if we have to, okay, could I, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So will.
Second?
Beth.
All in favor?
Aye. Be careful. Guys, I don't know where, but my husband sent a text saying, be careful, it's getting slippery out, so I don't know if it's the north.